I think the clock on the wall is slow, so I'm gonna call this meeting to the Goodyear Planning Commission to order. If we could have a roll call, please.
Yes. Chairman Lucas Slosser.
Here.
Vice Chair Ryan Peters.
Here.
Commissioner Randy Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Bray.
Here.
Commissioner Leslie Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Kathleen Short. Commissioner Vicki Hamilton.
Here.
I did have an email from Commissioner Short that she was gonna be absent. I need to back up one. We need to do the pledge of allegiance. If everybody could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Am I correct, there were no minutes to the meetings from last month's meeting provided? I didn't have any on my computer.
Yes, there were minutes provided.
I didn't hear you?
Yes, there were minutes from the last meeting.
It wasn't on my computer thing, so I didn't see those.
I'm sorry.
Well, that's right. Well, in any event, is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll oppose it since I didn't see it.
Could you repeat who the motion and second?
I made the motion.
Second, thank you.
Second Commissioner Hamilton. Thank you. And then I opposed it. Item number five, public comments. Is anyone from the public that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item this evening? Did you fill out a card?
I filled out a hand sheet.
Karen Cunningham? It's for something other than that's on the agenda tonight?
It is public opinion, something that is under the residence.
I think we should probably wait till we have staff and the applicant give their presentations, and then I'll call you, then I do have your card. Anybody else from the public? All right, seeing none, moving on. I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't see ya. Disclosure of ex parte communications?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Regarding case number thirteen dash two ten dash zero 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 four, on April twenty-second, representatives for the assisted living project told a community meeting in Pebble Creek. Prior to that, I had a brief phone call and email with Dennis Quarterman, one of their representatives. The purpose was to collect basic information needed to publicize the community meeting, which is part of my role as the HOA Communications Coordinator for Pebble Creek. I also attended the April twenty-second community meeting as a resident of Pebble Creek.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Seeing none? All right, thank you Commissioner Hamilton. Item number seven, old business, no old business. Item number eight, new business, eight point one, rezoning to amend the Serval Village Plan Area Development, the PAD, to change the land use designation from mixed-use commercial to residential. Five dwelling units per acre on six point four acres at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Parkway and One Hundred and Sixty-First Avenue. Welcome, Mr. Birmingham.
Thank you, Chairman Slosser, members of the commission, and members of the public. I've got an aerial photo exhibit for the Serval Village area. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Lower Buckeye Road and One Hundred and Sixty-First Lane. We're just talking about six point four acres here, and as you can see, existing land uses surrounding the property to the north, you can see Lower Buckeye Parkway, and just to the north of that, there is a grass area, part of a park, and there's also a school to the northeast. To the south is single-family residential, part of the Serval Village PAD. Also to the east, One Hundred and Sixty-First Lane, and residential, part of the Serval Village PAD. And to the west, you've got single-family residential, also part of the Serval Village Plan Area Development. In nineteen ninety-eight, the City Council approved a final PAD for Serval Village, which included approximately three hundred and twenty acres of property, and as you can see here on this exhibit, all of the parcels were designated for residential except for this one commercial parcel here. There's also a small parcel here, but all of the other areas of the development have been developed in single-family residential development. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the PAD to change the land use designation for this six point four acres from mixed-use commercial to residential. The development of the subject property under its current commercial land use designation is unlikely, since the commercial site is not located immediately adjacent to an arterial intersection or an arterial roadway. As you can see, it's internal, and there are existing residential homes at the corner of Lower Buckeye Parkway and Serval Avenue. Additionally, there is a significant amount of undeveloped commercial parcels within a mile of the subject property at arterial intersections which can serve this area. So this is the proposed land use plan. Subject property is right here. So as you can see, the applicant is proposing to amend the PAD to change the land use designation to single-family residential, similar to what is around it. They intend to initiate the development of a twenty-six lot, single-family residential subdivision, and now I'd like to show you that exhibit. The residential subdivision is proposed to contain twenty-six lots, although the application requests a minimum lot width of forty-five feet. Only half of the twenty-six lots are about forty-five feet wide. The rest of the lots are proposed to be fifty feet wide. As you can see on the exhibit, the proposed development plan includes two neighborhood park areas designed for active recreation, and so the applicant is proposing amenities, including grass turf, tot lots, playground equipment, benches, barbecue grills, covered Ramada, things of that nature, also shade structure over the tot lot. The site is proposed to develop in a manner that's consistent with the existing surrounding residential subdivisions, and also wanted to note that this development will require, it is required, to follow the existing development standards in the Serval Village PAD. There was a citizen review meeting for this case on June seventh, and there were seven property owners who came to this meeting, including a representative of the Serval Village HOA. The residents in attendance were very supportive of the request. During the meeting, there were two things I wanted to note. During the meeting, there were a few of the attendees who asked about the park area to the north that's adjacent to Lower Buckeye Road. The applicant talked about how they were proposing a tot lot, a play area for children, and a few of the residents expressed concern about children, maybe they could be able to run out into the street. And so they asked the applicant if they would consider providing some kind of a low wall. The applicant noted that they didn't want to provide a tall six-foot block wall along Lower Buckeye Road. They preferred to keep it open, and they wanted to have a more open and landscaping view and feel to the proposed subdivision. So the applicant has subsequently agreed to provide a low wall in the area north of the covered tot lot, which will provide increased safety for children who may be playing at the neighborhood park area, and we've added that as a stipulation number four in your staff report. And the final thing that I wanted to note, residents also expressed a desire for the applicant to construct a pedestrian connection in the opening at the southwest park area to kind of connect it to the existing development, and also to give an opportunity for the existing homes to be able to access those park areas. And the applicant responded that although they would love to have an opening in the wall to promote this pedestrian connectivity, the Serval Village HOA would have to approve that connection being made through their wall. And so the applicant has agreed to work with the HOA to explore this pedestrian connection. And this concludes the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. Also, Mr. Adam Ba is here to answer any questions on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners to staff at this point? All right, seeing none. Mr. Ba, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Adam Ba with you, Morris, twenty-five twenty-five East Arizona Biltmore Circle. Thank you for your time tonight and the service that you provide to your community, and I know that you have a lot of things to do in the middle of the week, so I promised to be really brief, and I only have actually, I think, three slides of mine I'd love to share with you. What you see here is a vacant lot with an L-shaped residential subdivision just on the west and south of it. It kind of has an interesting history. I think when this was planned back in the late nineties, there was a great vision for this community, and I think the feeling was, let's create a commercial type of use right here, and a many for the residents. I don't understand the history why, but that didn't occur, and eventually, the L shape that you see around the west and the south side became residential. And by converting to residential, essentially handcuffed this vacant lot from ever becoming commercial in the future. The reality is, if it's not along an arterial street, it just isn't viable. I know subsequent to that, the prior owners had looked at, well, perhaps maybe we could do like a charter school, and they proposed a high school charter school. That certainly brought out a lot of sentiment in the neighborhood, something that wasn't supported by them, and ultimately was withdrawn because of the pushback and opposition they received from the residents. And so this infill piece had sat vacant for a number of years. I often refer to pieces like this as kind of the donut hole for the donut. Everything develops around it, and somehow it just gets hopped over. And so whenever you have infill like this, you try to find something that's compatible but still needs a little bit of flexibility. Fortunately, my client's Empire, and they have a history of developing residential homes on infill pieces just like this all across the valley. And so they found this site. It took a little bit of engineering and some creativity, but they're able to make it work. And so what you see here on this exhibit, on the left is the before, which is the mixed-use commercial area, and on the right is the after. This case is recommended by approval for this body and the City Council. It will mirror the similar surrounding land uses. And ultimately, the development plan will look like this as it sits in with its neighborhood. Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a twenty-six lot subdivision, highly compatible with its surrounding circumstances, and what I most appreciate is the support we received from the adjacent neighbors. When we began this process, one of the first calls we did, we made, was to the HOA president. We wanted to introduce ourselves, to tell them what we were doing, and get some of their feedback. And then subsequently, we had a neighborhood meeting, and through them, they were able to forward this to their body as well, and so we had a number of residents come, both adjacent in the area, and it was very well received. I appreciate the feedback they gave us, and through their feedback, we've decided to kind of add some additional features, both with pedestrian connectivity on the south side, as well as a low wall on the north side, and as a result, I think it's a good plan that's not just our proposal, but it's incorporated with feedback from the neighbors. I really appreciate the effort and time staff put into preparing this case, through their negotiation and stipulations. I think they've helped create and design a wonderful community, and the beauty of this is it has two open space areas, not just passive, but actually active open space for kids to enjoy and play. And so we really think this is a great use, highly compatible with the area. We're thankful for staff's recommendation, and we're thankful for the support from the neighbors, and I appreciate your time tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody?
I have a question.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes, Mr. Ba, what happened when you talked to the HOA in terms of the wall?
Actually, the HOA is here as well, and perhaps they could answer your question for you. I think it's well received, and I think we're in the process of considering annexing into their HOA, and if that's the case, we can have the luxury of taking down that little portion of the wall and make a connection.
So you've made an agreement?
A tentative agreement, I'd say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? I had something.
Oh, my apologies.
You said the HOA is here, but stipulation number two, where it involves the annexation, just out of curiosity, it says the annexation into the Serval Village HOA prior to recordation of the final plan?
Correct.
But it's under reasonable terms mutually acceptable to both parties?
Correct, and I know it's kind of unusual to have a private agreement be part of a public land use case. It's very unusual. Legally, it's something I haven't seen very often, because essentially, the stipulation's compelling two parties to negotiate, and perhaps those negotiations could resolve themselves in agreement, and perhaps they couldn't. So I think that's why they said mutually agreeable, which means that the HOA can say, yeah, annex into us, but pay some million dollars first, or whatever the case may be. So I don't know how that will work out, but it's a discussion that we'll have to entertain with them, and I think the point was not to have a gun to your chest, but at the same time, just work together in a cooperative manner.
Okay. I guess that's it. Other than, my feeling is, I was aware of the charter school that owned it before, and I think the staff report and the application's exactly right, that to put it to commercial use, the charter school, prior to having the school across the street as well, that it's a good change of land use to do the residential there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I did have one card from the public, and I apologize, I can't read.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay. Are you a medical doctor?
Psychotherapist.
It looks like a prescription writing.
My writing is like that.
Honestly.
Oh, don't put me in it.
I admit, that's.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Susan Lutz. I'm HOA president. My address is twenty-nine seventy, South One Hundred and Sixty-second Lane in Serval Village in Goodyear.
And I'm James Evans in two-three oh six, South One Hundred and Sixty-second Lane in Goodyear, Osh.
So the first name was mine.
And I would have guessed that, by the way.
She's the president, I'm the vice president. That's it for the HOA.
We came here as a support for Empire, because we do like their ideas, is that we are a community of eleven-hundred-and-ten homeowners, and trust me, if they don't like something, they let us know. We would much prefer having homes there that are going to be nice upscale homes versus having any type of commercial-type setting whatsoever, unless it was a Starbucks. So, that said, is almost all the residents, we have not had anyone complain, and we've got it out to the community quite a bit as to what was going on. So we are agreeable to it. They have met with me, as Adam said, quite a few times already. We are looking at annexing, but it will be a board decision and a community decision as well, and if it does, then we're not objective to the idea of having that walkway through there. If we don't annex and for any reason, we'd have to reconsider that.
No, that's basically it. We'll be negotiating with them, and if they want to come into HOA, there's certain things that we would like to have them change a little bit, mainly for water, you know, which is a disaster for us. We pay about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year for water, so it's getting to be a real problem.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your input. We appreciate it. Anything else from staff? Nothing from the applicant further? Nothing from the commissioners, all right? I'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number one-three-two-one-zero-zero-zero-three.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Peters and a second from Commissioner Bray. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, guys. All right, item, are there any other cards for the public for the next item on the agenda? All right, thank you. Item eight point two, rezoning to amend the Goodyear Planed Regional Center Final Plan Area Development to allow an assisted living facility on a portion of parcel twelve designated for court homes. Mr. Carretia, I guess open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a PAD amendment for parcel twelve within the Goodyear PRC Planed Area Development. This is the location of parcel twelve here at Virginia and Pebble Creek. Currently, parcel twelve is designated for court home development. The proposal is for approximately a five-acre portion of parcel twelve there at the corner. Surrounding the parcel, we have the Rio Paseo neighborhood to the east, proposed commercial development to the south and southwest, and we have Pebble Creek to the west across Pebble Creek Parkway. And to the north will be the remainder portion of parcel twelve, which will remain permitted for court home development. The PAD amendment proposal for the property is an assisted living facility, approximately one-hundred-and-eleven suites, ninety-four thousand square feet proposed for the building within two stories. The initial request included two deviations to development standards. One is to parking. Currently, eighty-three parking spaces would be required. The applicant is proposing seventy-two. The deviation for the height, the applicant was proposing a maximum height of thirty-five feet. It appears that request will no longer be a part of this PAD amendment. The applicant looked at the building height, looks like they can keep it under thirty feet, so that request may go away with this PAD. So that request may go away with this PAD amendment. Neighborhood meeting was held on June 5th. We had at least 10 residents from the Rio Paseo neighborhood to the east attend that meeting. Among other issues they raised, one of the main concerns was the height and scale of the building. And they were worked, trying to work with applicant to find another location that they felt would be more compatible. Most of the neighbors felt that the existing permitted use of court homes would be a preferred use for that property. While applicant did commit at that meeting that they would reevaluate the building height, look at the issue before the planning and zoning commission and city council hearing, it looks like they were able to look at that and keep the building under 30 feet, but I will let the applicant explain more on that process. In viewing the application, we do find it will be consistent with the general plan. We do find it will be compatible with the surrounding area. We are recommending approval subject to the stipulations in the staff report. There could be one change if the building height can be maintained at 30 feet. Stipulation number five would need to be revised from 35 feet to a max height of 30 feet. But with that, Mr. Chairman, my presentation is complete. I'm available for questions. The applicant is here and I know several of the residents are here.
All right, thank you, Steve. Anything for staff at this point? Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, Steve. The applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission. My name is Greg Elmore. I'm with Linity Architecture out of Salem, Oregon. Address 1915 First Street, Salem, 97302. I'm here as a part of a team. Also have Columbia Pacific Advisors, who's going to be the owner of this facility, and Emeritus, who is the provider, the providing group for the services for this facility. I do have a PowerPoint that I'd like to go through. I'll make it as quick as possible. It was mentioned earlier, luckily, there's no basketball game. Don't know if there's any basketball fans, but I'll take as little time as possible. We appreciate Steve's and the rest of the staff's help on this and I think we're going, we're going through the right process and we appreciate you letting us speak now. We did have two prior meetings to the one that Steve mentioned with, two neighborhood meetings. Most of the comments and the vast majority of the comments that we got back were all positive. We did get a few at the, at the last meeting that we had and we've done our best to address those, the ones that we can address. And I'll just kind of, I'll kind of go through, the first few slides of this are really just kind of who we are and what is the assisted living and memory care. I want to make sure that everyone understands what we're trying to do. Columbia Pacific is the owner of this. They've done these, these types of facilities, senior housing facilities, all across the country, even internationally, from assisted living and memory care, which is what we're proposing in this building, even combinations of skilled nursing, which we are not providing in some independents. They've been doing this for over 30 years and, and they pride themselves on coming into markets that need this service drastically and finding locations where, where seniors in the area are not served for this type of use. And then they've teamed up with Emeritus, who's, who's considered probably one of the best, if not the best, operating partner in the country. Why we selected this area, senior housing population in North America is growing at exponential growth. And it's become, this, this type of senior housing has become an acceptable choice as retirement. And the existing senior supply, senior housing supply in the area right now is, is vastly underserved. Some of the community services that we provide in our building, just, these are real quick. We have concierge service, strong relationships with hospitals and nearby medicals, scheduled transportation. One thing that you need to know about these residents is they're not driving. We're not going to be impacting your traffic. Our, our traffic, that was a comment that came up a couple of times, was traffic generation, traffic generation. We simply don't have that traffic generation and any traffic generation we do provide, or we do have is, is off-peak. Our shift changes are really our, our major and our shift changes happen around 10 o'clock in the morning and then 7 o'clock after dinner. So it's prior to lunch and after dinner. Routine maintenance, once we, once we put this, this facility in, it's, it behooves us to make this facility look, look good. So we're anxious to get in there and clean up the sidewalk that's out there right now that's got the weeds growing through the sidewalk. We're anxious to get in there and get this cleaned up and we really want to fit into this community. And at the bottom, we do have pets allowed. That's just kind of a cute little addition. Some of the healthcare, healthcare services that we provide, we have trained professionals on staff. What this does is, is every unit has a, every, every suite in the facility has a nurse call system. So it's, we're not, we're not taxing the emergency systems, the 911, or emergency systems for needless minor situations. If there's, if there's something that's needed, it calls back to our nurse station and we have 24 hour staff that, that can move in quickly, assess that and then find out if we need to call full emergency system. And then various other occupational therapy, health screening, other, other items that we, that we offer as, to the, to the residents of the facility. We do have dining on site, three meals a day, private dining, special menus. We offer fresh baked goods, fruits and snacks all throughout the day. Several community activities, I'm just going to list a few here. These are all happening with inside this building. Beauty salon, theaters, fitness and wellness. We, we, we approach this as it's an elderly population, but we keep them as active as possible. Arts and crafts, comfortable outdoor spaces and patios. So we make this as much of a home as, as, so when they leave their home, they don't feel like they're moving into an institution. And that's another reason that we, we like the location where, where we are now. We don't want to be set in an institutional or commercial zone. We like to be that buffer between that commercial zone and the residents. This is just a quick, a quick showing. This is a standard assisted living, one bedroom unit. We actually offer studio, one bedroom and two bedroom facilities, studio, suites. You can see our studios range, studio and one bedroom, square footage ranges. A two bedroom would be the same bedroom and bathroom, just mirrored to the other side of the living room. And then a studio is just a little bit larger living room with a bathroom connected. Our assisted living are all private. There's no shared units in the assisted living. This is a typical semi-private memory care suite. And the reason I show you this one is, this is kind of the new trend. We don't, it's not two beds in one room. We actually give them each an entry door. The only thing that's shared in this unit is the bathroom. We do offer private studios as well if, if someone just simply doesn't want to share the bathroom. But we find that a lot of the residents that move into this like that companionship and that closeness, knowing someone's really close by. But we do, we do offer them the, the privacy that a lot of, that you, a lot of the facilities in, in the area right now just don't have. It's usually two bedrooms and one larger room and they share the bathroom. Again, this is our site. We're north of Interstate 10 at the northwest corner of Virginia Avenue in Pebble Creek. Currently, the land is, consists of three tax lots totaling about 17, a little over 17 acres. And all the parcels are zone PAD approved court, approved for the court homes. We're requesting a simple lot line adjustment. You saw back here, the smaller piece at the bottom is, is the one that we're just adjusting up to create the 5.13 acre property that will house our assisted living memory care. We are asking to amend that PAD to allow that assisted living and memory care on that 5.13 acres only. The remainder, the remaining 12 and a quarter acre will remain the PAD is currently, is currently approved. Show this slide. This is a schematic of, but a, but it is, it is the approved court home site plan from the 2001 PAD. And what I really want to point out here is there is a one-story stipulation on this PAD and those are shown as the striped buildings. I kind of left the top north, northeast, or excuse me, northwest corner because since this was done, there's the new power plant that sits in that corner. But the striped buildings that you see up there are all to be single story based on what the PAD approval was. Everything that you see shaded solid right now is approved for two-story and a maximum height of 30 feet. And another thing that I'd like to point out is along the Roosevelt Canal, that's a 10-foot building setback. So those, there's a 10-foot landscape buffer, but it's also a building setback in the court homes. 30 foot along Virginia, 40 foot along Pebble Creek currently. That's the build, those are building setbacks that are, that are currently approved. So we're going to take this and what I really want to show you is, this is what we're, this is kind of the overlay of, of what we're doing and, and on top of what would be, what is already approved. This is our assisted living. We're taking out approximately 27 to 28 of the court homes. This, with our 111 unit assisted living and memory care, there's 79 assisted living suites, 32 memory care suites, 55 beds in that, in those 32. I think what, what we're looking at here is we understand that there were some comments and questions about potential traffic impacts on this. Again, our peak, our daytime peak is about 0.8 units in the, or 0.8 trips per unit in the AM and 0.35 in the PM. And we're, that's, that's AM trips, not even peak. And then, and then our PM trips are 0.35 per unit and those are, and those, again, those are all off-peak trips. So if we just kind of strip this out and then focus only on our, on ours, again, this is zone PAD, 5.13 acres. That just kind of gives you a breakdown. We've got open space, almost 90,000 square foot of open space on this five acres. And we've done the parking study and we've, we're working with staff right now. This is overparked for what we would normally need. Usually, half a space per unit is, is all we really need, but we understood. So we were trying to meet a happy medium and I think that we're, that we've got studies that show this is ample parking for this type of facility and it also keeps us from adding more pavement to the site. Things that I wanted to let, bring out on this one, we have a 10-foot landscape buffer that's required along the irrigation canal. We have the 30-foot landscape buffer along both frontages. Our building setback from this is, from the canal is 52 feet. From Virginia, we're at 80 feet minimum and the Pebble Creek Parkway, we're 87 feet. And I'm just bringing that up because the single story pieces that, that were supposed to be along Pebble, the two frontages were at 40 and 30 foot setbacks. So we kind of pulled that off the street so we were not going to be encroaching into that single story space. So part of the variance that, that we're trying to work out right now is, is do we even need a variance for that two-story at that, that dimension or that distance from those rightaways? And then a 30-foot setback on the north, but we're going to own and control the, the 12 acres above us, so the 35-foot setback is plenty for us. So as we were going through the last meeting that we had, there were some additional site requests from the Rio Paseo neighbors. So we've, what we've done is we've taken what we originally designed and, and took into their consideration, took into consideration what they were asking us to do. One that they asked us to do was to reduce the landscape size and number along the east and I believe that was, they didn't want a row of tall trees planted along that 10-foot landscape buffer that might block views to the mountains off to the west. We can, we can work with staff, we can work with commission on, on how that needs to be. We don't have any issues if, if we want to keep those plants at a, at a lower scale that matches the fence that's going to go along that, that east property line. There was also a request to move the trash enclosure. Right now, we put it in the back, on the back corner where we thought it was going to be the least, but a few of the neighbors that were there on the east asked us to move it. We've now, we're going to relocate it to the north and I'll show you that picture here in a minute. We'll be changing the detention pond up to the north. It's semi-designed at the moment, but it, it didn't cause any problems for us. The other one was, we've proposed an open railing fence just to allow light and breeze to come through there. There was a request by some and, and don't know exactly how that batted back and forth with the Rio Paseo neighbors, but a majority of them mentioned that a six-foot block wall to match their six-foot block wall on the other side of the canal might be better suited. We're open either way. We feel that the open railing fence might serve better based on some of the comments about blocking breeze or, or, or blocking light through that space. But again, we're open to either one of those. And the last one was the building height. We've initially, as Steve mentioned, we came in with a, a proposal to, to a variance to raise our building height, a max building height to 35 feet. But we've gone back now, taken in consideration what the neighbors have said, redesigned the roof, made sure engineer, engineering wise, we could get it done. We're well within the constraints of the materials that we'll be using for the roof, the, the clay tile. And we've lowered that down below the existing approved 30 feet. Our maximum ridge height across our common area is now 29 foot two. Majority of the building is under 28 feet. And we even have the one-story section down by, in the northeast corner that's a single story and that's, roof line is down at just above 16 feet. This is, just kind of shows you what that new plan looks like. Sorry, it's not colored. We were going through this as quick as we can between the last two. But there's the new trash enclosure location with the new detention pond and we're doing a centralized detention pond between the two. And it also opens up an alley, an alleyway for, a visual alleyway down that driveway to the mountains to the east for the residents that are on the top part of that. And down here below, this is the fence that we were, that we've currently proposed, just a, a nice decorative open rail fence. Again, we're open to, to either direction on that. And we're even open to sections of that being open and, and other parts of it if we need some screening for any reason. We can make parts of that as a solid block wall at six foot tall with this as interspersed, panels interspersed between them. So these are photographs that were taken. This is what it looks like today. I'm standing, you can see the arrow where I'm standing and I'm looking out across what, what that is. And that is a camera held on top of my head taking the picture. And that's about what roughly the first floor elevations of, of the neighbors behind the wall, probably even a little bit higher than the, than the, than, than those finished floor elevations. And this is actually standing in front of the block wall. So I have a, a neighbor, a block wall, and then I'm on the other side of the, on our side of the block wall. And then the canal depth, that setback is 110 feet. This is what they see today. This is just a mock-up of what is approved right now court home-wise. Two-story court homes, 10-foot setback across that canal. This is what that could look like. We didn't go through and design each one of those, but these are all less than 30 feet tall and, and court homes, and court homes spaced and, and designed what they're allowed to be designed, single story and, and two-story in that location. And this is what our facility would look like in that same view. So when you, when you compare what it could be and what we're proposing, we're, we're doing what we can to make sure that neighbors' views are not compromised. This is from, again, we're taking the lower five acres of this. So we're, I'm standing at the, at the property line now on the northeast corner, looking back across. This is what you would see on the other side of that wall, canal, and then we're, and then we're on the other side as well. This is what is approved to go in that location with all of those being two-story and 10-foot setbacks off of that property line. And this is what we're proposing. Another thing that, that our design- Another thing that, that our design does is, you can see, it's pretty drastic here. We've got a, we've got a couple of them on the right-hand side of the screen up, a couple of the two-story facilities on the right-hand screen that actually would be in the middle of the pond. So we actually clear a little bit more of a, a view angle. But we're not blocking mountains, we're not blocking a mountain view from this, down on the bottom five acres. This is just, this is the palette. We've talked, and one of the big concerns that we have when we move into this, into neighborhoods like this and then to become, to fit in, we like to go around, find building materials, find building colors that match the neighborhood, because we, we truly want to blend into this neighborhood. And all the comments that we got on the building, what the building looked like and what the use was, were all positive. Regardless, you know, ran the gamut on all three of our meetings. The, the ones that we did get were size and, and we just don't think that's a proper location. And currently, we feel that, that this is exactly what we want. We think it's good use. We're reducing quite a bit of, of traffic, utility usage in the city with this type of a facility. So this is really what we look for and to become a good neighbor with, with, with everyone in our, in our surroundings. Quick facility recap. Again, we're Columbia Pacific. Emeritus will be the management company. This is a two-story assisted living, seventy-nine suites, one-story of memory care with thirty-two suites. Added level of care, we're providing a much-needed service to allow local seniors to remain in the area. And the majority of our residents currently live, this says within ten miles just to be safe, but, but I can tell you right now, our performer really narrows it down to about five miles. This is a good location for, for what we're trying to provide to this community. Twenty-four-hour care of supervised licensed nursing staff, three nutritious meals and snacks throughout the day and all of the onsite amenities that I just kind of briefly went through. Community recap, we're a low-impact of the city services. We're a low-traffic generation. Statistically, our one-hundred-and-eleven units is, the traffic generation alone is going to be about half of what the twenty-seven court homes are pulling out and none of, and a majority of, I can't say none, but a majority of our traffic is off-peak. We are a good transition between commercial and residential. Again, this is what we look for. We like to be that buffer between the residential and the commercial just to the south of us. We're a long-term neighbor committed to the seniors in Goodyear. Emeritus has got several facilities in this, in the Goodyear and, and Phoenix area. And, and we really enjoy being here. We're providing in develop, in fill development, providing construction and jobs to the area and providing full and part-time employment to fifty-plus staff. We don't have fifty staff onsite at one time. Our largest shift is about eighteen to twenty-one staff, and that's when we're, when we're full. And then there was some questions about, and I'm not sure how, how this is, is handled with this commission, but there were questions that were brought up was, if we pulled out twenty-seven court homes, what is the tax revenue that is, that is lost to the city of Goodyear? This is an estimated, this is a very conservative estimate, and then it's all depending on the final value once we're, when, once we're done, but, but taxes that we'll bring in in the community are about two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars annually. That's it. I'm here for any questions. And again, we appreciate everything that you guys do.
All right. Hey, thank you very much for your excellent presentation.
I have a question.
You have a question?
I have a question.
Could you, I guess first of all, excellent presentation. And your slide showing the old proposed use and the new one, that really helped at least me mentally to figure out the difference there.
And, and I've left a few handouts with Steve. It's not that extensive, but if there's something that you need to see or you want to touch, they're here for your use.
Is it easy to switch back to the slide that's, that has the shaded, you're smiling, and the?
My IT guy's in the back saying, we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Commissioner Miller, you want to meet that?
If approved, when would you be breaking, when would you expect to be operational?
It's about a twelve-month build. And, and if you tell me I can submit construction documents tonight, we'll start them tomorrow and probably get them into the building department in three to four weeks.
And so the court homes, if this were, and I'm only saying if, in terms of revenue, if this were denied, when would those court homes be built?
We, we have not purchased the property. We are in negotiations with the bank and we do not purchase this property unless we get approval here. If we don't, if we don't get approval here, we walk away and it stays.
It stays vacant?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Peters?
Do you plan on purchasing the entire property?
Part of the sale was the entire property. And we actually like the court home idea as a potential senior feeder to this, but we do not have any plans right now. Obviously, if we move in and we do what we have to do, we have to rearrange those court homes a little bit. But, but we have no desire to change that PAD at this moment, no.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other commissioner?
You know what? I have a question for Steve, actually. And you can probably nod your head. This review is just for changing, not the zoning, but the planned area development. Will they have to come back and submit again for site review? Or is this all together?
No, they will have to come back for site plan review.
Okay.
Not before the commission.
Not, not in front of the commission for site plan.
Yeah. And that's? It'd be staff-only?
It'd be a staff-only review and then if they did the court homes and subdivided it, then you'd see the subdivision plot.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else? I do have one card from the public. Karen Cunningham? Thank you. You didn't check whether or not you support or, or oppose?
Me?
Uh-huh.
Oppose.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I am Karen Cunningham and a resident of Rio Paseo. My address is one-five-three-nine-six West Windsor.
Okay.
I'm here to represent some of the Rio Paseo residents and we have a petition. I've made copies for you, but I can set it here. I have sixty signatures of, well, sixty signatures of residents that have signed it. I'm a resident. I'm just going to read. I know I have three minutes. I am a teacher, starting my ninth year at Desert Edge High School, which is a Title One school here. I chose to live in Goodyear, attracted by the sign that I saw when I first arrived. It said, "The All-American City." And so I started researching a little bit and looking for a place to invest. I also noticed that it now says solar community. I'm a contributor to that. Recently, last fall, I invested over thirty-seven thousand dollars in my home to have it one-hundred percent solar. Prior to buying my home, I did my research. I looked at, yeah, that's the original on top and copies underneath. There you go. Thank you. I looked at over twenty homes before I invested and I found a large cul-de-sac lot, canal at the back, view of the white tanks. The land, the open land was zoned for patio homes. Trusting those public records, I invested. Every year, I added improvements to my home since I've been living there. When I learned about the proposed amendment to the land, I was shocked. A neighbor who was in the orig, one of the original property owners, who like five others of the ten that live in the one cul-de-sac where I live, has tufted out, paying their taxes, adding to the values of their home, even though they have lost an average of sixty percent of their home value right now. He had, one of my neighbors had a study completed, he's an architect, and found that the proposed building would further lower our property values at least, conservatively, at least ten percent. Sixty neighbors have signed our grassroots petition to oppose the amendment of the property bordering our neighborhood because the structures proposed is not consistent with the residence of our family community. It was communicated in the five-June meeting that that was part of the criteria for building there. The patio homes were consistent with that and that's what we were led to believe when we did our purchasing there, that that's what would be there. The amendment to the land usage resonates with a feeling of, and this is through talking to neighbors and the people that sign, resonates with a feeling of our good faith betrayed. We are requesting that the zoning commission reconsiders the amendment. If approved by the board, the building, the structure would put undue financial hardship on my good neighbors, their families, and myself. Sixty-plus families should not bear the burden of that amendment. Now, as listening to the presentation and what we have heard before on the five-June meeting, we're not against having a facility like that. I mean, it's a wonderful, wonderful transition facility, but it's not consistent with our neighborhood. Colors, building materials set aside, it's not why we bought our homes the way, where we did. If there's any comments, I'll try to answer questions, but.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your input. I guess my first question, did you, you obtained all these signatures yourself?
A couple neighbors did.
Okay.
That's why they're, they're sixty. It's, there's a blank on the one page. It's because different people had them.
Sure. And I'm not familiar with these streets, but Windsor and.
Windsor is.
These are all adjacent east of this proposed project?
And the other meeting that we had on the fifth, I believe they said that we had about ten residents there. Maybe we did, it was something like that. The earlier meetings, I believe, were very, very poorly attended, so I didn't want it to be understood that, you know, just because the majority said at those meetings, if they weren't well-attended, the majority wasn't much. So that's what I was led to understand. I know I did not attend those meetings. I was not aware.
Okay. Any questions ever from the commission? Well, regardless of how this commission acts tonight, we appreciate your, your input and all the work you did. And I would encourage you to keep following up with, there'll still be another, the city council meeting.
I, yes, that's what I understood. Thank you.
And have, have as much input as you can have there.
All right. Thank you very much and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff or the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I think there may be one more speaker that wishes to.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I just found this. And I can't, can't, Candace Weest? Is that right? You must be a doctor, too.
Worse, I'm a banker.
All right, thank you. Please state your name and address.
Candace Weest. I live at one-one-two-one-two Quinn Drive in Goodyear. And I am the president and CEO of West Valley National Bank. We are the owners of the property right now. And I just thank, want to thank the commissioners very much for taking the time to hear us today. We took this property back in two thousand and nine, and we've had a number of offers from home builders since that period of time. And at the same time we received this offer, we had another offer that was the same price from a home builder. My background is really focused in economic development. I've done a lot with Westmark. I'm a former chair of Westmark. I'm on the Commerce Authority. I'm a former director of the San Francisco Fed. And so when we looked at this as a bank that is owned by one-hundred-and-fifty-nine Arizonans, we wanted to do the right thing for the community. And the reason we liked this project, we had several things that we liked. The reason was not money, that we picked one over the other, because the offers were very similar. And in fact, the closing might have even been quicker with the home builder, which is important to us as a small, locally-owned bank. We liked it because it kept quality jobs right here in the West Valley. It was very consistent with the medical push in the state. Medical is number-two industry in the state of Arizona. We liked it because it diversified our local economy. And when the home builders leave, as we all found out, we get to live with whatever is done. These people are part of the fabric of the community and they're going to have jobs here. We liked the quality of the product. We checked out their track record. And I think the fact that they've worked to address the neighbors' heartfelt concerns says a lot about who these people are. And we, we felt that early on in the process because we were reluctant. Finally, we also looked at the need. Right now, there are five million people, over sixty-five in the U.S. that have Alzheimer's. In the next ten years or so, that number's going to increase by forty percent and it'll triple by two thousand and fifty, based on what's going on in the population. It is the sixth-leading cause of death in the United States right now, and the number of deaths have increased by sixty-eight percent from two thousand to two thousand and ten. So we saw the need for this facility. We also have a medical niche at our bank, a number of physicians are our clients. And one of them told me that one of the saddest things that he sees is the love between a couple dissipate when one has to go into an institutional facility and you have to drive to go see the loved one and the other partner's maybe aging as well. And so we like this facility in that it'll provide a service we think is really needed. And that was really our motivation with this. So I just want to say thank you very much for your consideration.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions ever? All right, thank you again. Did the applicant have something else they wish to say?
We did have, we did have two of the neighborhood meetings prior to that. And the Pebble Creek, both HOAs were notified when we had the, the two meetings. And the numbers that came out at the, at Pebble Creek were substantial. It was about a hundred and ten. We ran out of handouts and I was chastised for that. And then we did, we did have a, a conversation with the HOA for Rio Paseo and, and I, I don't know how that message got out. There were not very many people that showed up at the Rio Paseo originally, but word did get out. Steve made a conscious effort to make sure that Rio Paseo was, was available or was, was at least informed. And, and we did appreciate the comments and, and that, that came into us from Rio Paseo. And we understood, and we understood, don't block view. And the big ones were, it was going to be a massive building and it was going to block views from all the way across. I understand that sixty people signed, the sixty-plus people signed the petition, but we're affecting seven buildings on the, that, seven homes directly along that east property line. And, and a handful of those are three-story, some of them are two-story. The shots that I showed you are all viewed from a single story and I can still see mountains over our building that I cannot see over what's the approved two-story facilities. And, and we did take, we, we took the time, we re-engineered, we redid, we redesigned the roof of that building and redesigned portions of that building to bring that building height down below the, the thirty feet that, that's approved to go there right now. Again, they love the use, they love the way the building looks, but they didn't, they don't want it in that location. We've, we've scoured, this is the land that's available and this is the land where, where we want to be. And we really feel that, that we become a major contributor to this, to this neighborhood. So a hundred and ten plus five or six, plus another ten to fifteen. So we got a pretty good overall view of, of everybody's comments. And, and we did address the ones, I, I feel like that we have addressed the ones that, that came back negative and we've moved some stuff around. And, and, and I apologize for that. The third meeting, we weren't really expecting to have too much. It was more of a formality that we thought at the time, because everything had been positive prior to that. But, but again, this is, this is the, this is the location that we, that we look for in these facilities, because we do feel that, that, that our, our need, our use fits in with a neighborhood and is the perfect buffer for that commercial that's going to happen to the south as a transition between that commercial to the south that moves into the neighborhoods, both at Rio Paseo and Pebble Creek. Thank you. Sorry.
I did have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Is there an age restriction?
I, I would rather go that to operations. Normally, usually there is an age restriction, restriction. However, in the memory care, a lot of times they will tell, it's not just.
however, in the memory care, a lot of times they will take, it's not just Alzheimer's. Sometimes there's dementia and other types, so they can apply for waivers through our licensing with the state, and, and you can get, you can get younger people in there that simply need the help that the families just can't provide that help for. But, but normally I would say, yes, there is, there is an age restriction.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great presentation. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Did staff have anything else? No? Comments from the commission?
I...
Commissioner Miller?
Never stop. As an elder member, as I'm finding of the commission, I want to applaud Mrs. Cunningham for coming out and taking the time to do that. I wish more citizens would be as proactive. It will be difficult, but I, when we live in a community, the community on some, is more than just sixty homes or eighty homes. It's a huge community in Goodyear. I think that this was very well thought out. I think the presentations on both your parts were very good. I thank you both. But I will say that I will be voting for this amendment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the commission?
I'll just say that, as an architect myself, I'm convinced that visually what the, the houses are going to get is going to be better. What I can address is the effect on their property values. I really have no idea if that's going to affect them negatively or not. I'm looking at Luke.
I'd really not comment on that. Anybody else? My only comments, and again, I agree with Commissioner Miller on her comments, and thanks for your participation. As far as the actual land use and the location, being adjacent to Pebble Creek, and also with this, we've had several different assisted care facilities through our commission here the last few years, and being next to the proposed mall when, when and if that ever gets in, it is a good location. And as far as they're agreeing to reduce the, the height of the, the buildings from thirty-five to thirty, and if those conceptuals are accurate, seems to me like, like it's a reasonable trade-off, so. All right. With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number one-three-two-one-zero-zero-zero-zero-four.
I second.
Motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excuse me?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I was going to ask if that included a change to stipulation number five to restrict the height to thirty instead of thirty-five.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And, and if there were any other additional stipulations that you wish to add, based on the commitments that were verbally represented, for example, about the wall along the east property line, minimizing the number and height of trees along that east property line, and then relocating the trash container that they represented.
Would that be your recommendation, to include that in the motion?
My recommendation is that if it's not included as a stipulation, it might be difficult to enforce otherwise.
Then my motion is amended to include all of the concessions or agreements that the developer has, has come up with.
Okay, the motion's been moved.
And I second.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you, folks. Item number nine, staff communications.
I don't have anything particular, other than the delivery of the agenda went more smoothly this time, I hope.
Okay.
Was it better?
Yes.
And visit with you later, Commissioner, Chairman Schlosser, about the minutes to find out what happened there.
Yeah, I don't know where it was. It said there was, right on the computer screen, so there's, there were no minutes attached to it.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
I mentioned this to Vice Chair Peters a few months ago. I'm not going to be at next month's meeting, and I don't know if he can be available or not. But don't we, as a commission, don't we, in the past few years, haven't we taken a break in July?
Chairman Schlosser, I think the only break we've ever taken is if there were a lack of agenda items. Generally, we have not scheduled a break. We believe we'll have two preliminary Platts for consideration next month.
Okay. They must have fallen in, in July then, because I know usually I'm gone for that meeting, and, and for some reason they were canceled anyway, so.
Mr. Chairman, I just found out today that I have a word commitment that I'm getting sent away for, so I won't be here as well. I, I probably could attend, but maybe I would attend by phone, but I'm promising.
There was a rule to that, right? I can't remember what it is, but...
Yeah, I think, I think it goes to the most senior member to be interim chair.
Now, when you say senior member... I only say that because she was making fun of herself earlier.
Longest tenure on the commission.
For the record.
Fortunately, with Platts, we, we need a quorum, but we don't need a supermajority or anything like a, well, you guys don't really have it on the zoning, but it's better when there's more people for rezonings.
Okay. Well, I won't be here for sure. The dirty looks, I guess.
This is every July.
I'm sorry.
One for me.
I guess I can bring it up later. It's already seven o'clock. Well, real quick, the, and I won't waste anybody's time, but the HOA, the vice chairman, I was riding my bicycle through Canyon Trails this morning, early. Beautiful trails, and, and north of Yuma there, and all the grass, and this is just something for everybody, food for thought for, in the future. There's somebody out there mowing, the sprinklers are on, and I'm thinking to myself while I'm riding early in the morning that, that, geez, we live in a desert, and we have, I don't know how many acres and acres and acres of grass. And don't get me wrong, I think it's beautiful. But at some point, wouldn't it be nice to sort of address that and, and cut back on water? And I know, living on an acre myself, the city of Goodyear, the, the water fees are pretty astronomical. And the, the vice chairman is what reminded me of this. He said that Servo Village, their water bill's a hundred and ninety grand a year for the water. That's a lot of water. So, just...
Canyon Trails, it was two-hundred-and-ninety thousand.
Huh?
Canyon Trails, it was two-hundred-and-ninety thousand.
So I don't know if the city of Goodyear, at some point in the future, should sort of think about changing that. I don't know what builders or homeowners or whoever thinks about that, but at some point, we may not all be around, but at some point, we're going to potentially run out of water, and everybody's going to say, geez, what do we do now?
Those, those discussions and conversations are starting.
Oh, good.
So we'll keep you apprised as they progress.
So I'm a mind reader, is what you're saying?
That's right.
All right. All right, with that, sorry for wasting everybody's time. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.